Gentlemen, this is the Board of Commissioners, City Hall, Bowling Green, Kentucky Regular Meeting, meeting in June 20, 2023 at 4:30. And we're going to begin with the invocation of Pledge Allegiance. And I'm going to start with the invocation. So if you stand. Gereley, Father, we just thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for this rain that we've had for our community. We just pray for this community and we pray for the leadership. We pray for our city employees. We pray for our police, our fire. We pray for our entire community. And we just ask that we can just work together. We can continue to be the amazing hometown that we all know and love and feel. And that we will just work together to continue to make this community the beautiful Bowling Green it is. And that you continue to prosper us. And we thank you for these things. In Jesus' name we pray, amen. All right, go ahead and do the Pledge Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a seat, everybody. And Chief Delaney, would you tell the soccer team to please come on inside? Just say, hey, mayor's ready for you. We have some young men going to come join us and I will announce what they have accomplished for our our community. Come on in, gentlemen. I'm all the way up here, front and center. Come up to the stage with us. Actually, just corral right here because I think there's a, it's going to be a little bit easier. You guys are so tall. This is pretty special, what I'm going to announce. But this is the Bowling Green Football Club Youth Academy. And they are the Kentucky State Champions for the Cup, the World, the Kentucky Cup for the '05 Gold Team. And they're going to be advancing to the Midwest Regionals in St. Louis, Missouri. And they're going to represent all of Kentucky. They've won all of Kentucky. This is the first year they've ever won for the '05 Gold Team. And so congratulations for there. So gentlemen, if you can bring home the gold from the nation, that would be quite a, we would love for you to do that and we will bring you back to City Hall. But we are, we just thank you for your hard work, your commitment to you, your coaches, and what you've done for this community and that you're representing our community. You're already winning the state of Kentucky. We're very proud of you and we're glad that you're part of Bowling Green. So thank you very much, gentlemen. And I want to get a photo. I think Ashley's going to take that. All right. Commissioners, come in. All right, one more round of applause for the '05 team. Congratulations. Go get them, go win gold. Job, guys.
Bring it on back.
There you go. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Job. Congratulations.
Congratulations, looking at you.
Congratulations, Coach.
Congratulations. All right, Mrs. Jackson, will you please provide a roll call?
Commissioner Bailey.
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown.
Here.
Commissioner Hill.
Here.
Commissioner Perigin.
Here.
Mayor Alcott.
Here. At this time, I'll ask our city manager to make some comments.
Just a few, Mayor. I think we've, we had the Duncan Hines Day since the last meeting and it was a, a big success. I heard we had 16,000 people in that span of five days, different events. Twenty-eight states represented, maybe more. If I'm getting my numbers right, it's all I'm trying to remember. But really good, good first year for that event. And I'd like to thank everyone that worked on that. If I start naming names, I'll leave someone out, but Talia Butler for sure and her team. And everyone did a great job. So very, very happy about that. Next thing is just reminder to those in the audience, if you want to make public comments at the end of the regular session, please sign the, the register in the back corner of the room and we'll get to you after the regular session is over. And then last thing, there'll be a need, there is a need for a closed session and I'd like Ashley to read the reason.
Pursuant to KRS 61811C for discussions of pending litigation against the city.
So moved.
Okay.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Thank you.
There'll be no action coming out of closed session.
Okay, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Okay. Our first item is a regular meeting for June 6, 2023, approval of our minutes.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-118.
Unit's board are approving the promotion of Joshua Mitten to the position of Signal Technician One in the Public Works Department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
We have an opening in Operations Division, Public Works. As you all will recall, we, we lost an employee, Jeff Salings, in the Operations Division. He was the Signal Technician One. I'd like to remember him tonight as we, as we take this recommendation. I'd like to ask Andy Souza, our Public Works Director, to come up and give his recommendation to fill this spot. Andy?
Jeff, so it's my honor to recommend Josh, who is behind me with us tonight for rec, or for promotion to Signal Technician One. As many of you are aware, we have 23 stoplights in the city and we want to keep those green rather than red as much as we can. And a part of that is we have two full-time positions for that. And the next time you're stopped at a stoplight, if you find the silver box that's about the size of a dorm room fridge next to it, that's the controller for that and it is highly technical. So we need these positions filled in order to keep the city moving. So Josh has been with the city for about five years. He worked at Parks and Rec and in Public Works. And we had this open for anyone to apply. We had 15 apply for the position. We elected to do two internal reviews and interviews and Josh was the best qualified. So we'd like to have him take this position. He has a bachelor's degree from WKU in organizational leadership. He's working on his master's from Southern Baptist Theological Seminary and he is a youth minister. So I'll turn it over to the board for comment.
Hey, Joshua, will you stand up? Josh, does your dad work at Kroger's?
He does.
He's an awesome, he's one of the best butchers in all of Bowling Green. So on 31W bypass, you're, you're family, I know you've met in family a long time. But you have any family with you tonight? Well, we're proud of you and thank you for your technical expertise you bring to the city. And we're glad to see you up for this promotion tonight. All right. Commissioners, ready to make this official? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Congratulations, Joshua. Municipal Order Number 2023-118.
Unit's board are authorizing insurance premium payments to the Kentucky League of Cities Insurance Services for insurance coverages of general liability, public officials liability, law enforcement liability, automobile liability and fiscal damage and property and workers' compensation for fiscal year 2024.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
Like any other business, we need good insurance protection when, when things go awry. I'd like to ask Dave Wisbro to come up and give you just a brief overview of what we're looking at here with the, the increase in premium and the total and all that. Dave?
Thank you. Fiscal year 24 marks the last year of a three-year rate stabilization agreement signed with Kentucky League of Cities. They capped our, our premiums at one and a half percent, except for auto, which was capped at three, 3%. With this rate stabilization agreement, the city, city's overall rates increased very little. However, with added exposures, including payroll, personnel, property, especially property that has gone up 10% in value because of inflation, our total premiums year over year will increase 6.7%. One risk financing change included in FY '24 policy includes a move to a $15,000 deductible for our law enforcement liability, which was proposed with a claims deductible analysis report provided by Chris Wiseman with Halchens Insurance Group. We believe that change will provide the city with additional premium savings in the future. We've been pleased with the services and the insurance provided by Kentucky League of Cities and we recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Dave. Commissioners? Okay, no discussion, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right. Municipal Order Number 2023-120.
Unit's board are authorizing property and casualty insurance brokerage services and approving the renewal of agent fee disclosure statement with Halchens Insurance Group, Inc.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Bees, uh, sorry, Carlos Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
Hand this off to Dave as well. Dave?
So brokerage services are not limited to, but definitely include consultation on insurance issues, evaluations of policies. And as mentioned previously in the first, in, well, in the previous municipal order, loss experience and exposure, which includes deductible analysis. We've been very pleased with the property and casualty brokerage services provided by Halchens Insurance Group and in particular, Chris Wiseman. And we recommend that we continue this relationship with a new, a new three-year agreement, which will run at least through fiscal year 26.
All right, thank you, Dave. Commissioners? Okay, no discussion, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-121.
Unit's board are approving amended workforce participation lead agreement between the city of Bowling Green and Western Kentucky University.
So moved.
Okay.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
In December of '22, we partnered with WKU and the South Central Kentucky Workforce Development Board to find, to, to get this position of, for finding an, an analyst to help us with workforce participation. Buddy Steen took the lead on this, he, with WKU, and he's here tonight. And I'd like for him to just, just briefly get up and give you a quick update on what all he's been working on pertaining to this position as well. But this agreement before you, our first year was 20,000 our part. The cost has, has gone up a little bit and we are looking to, to get just add on a $7,500 more per year for the next four years. Hillary reworked this agreement to state that in it, to, to clean things up. But it'd be 27.5 for the next four years to, to keep this, this person on. And I'd like to ask Buddy to come up and, and give you an overview. Buddy?
First, proud to be here. The last time I spoke, I didn't have a presentation. So I brought a few slides because I think a picture's worth a thousand words. This'll go a bit quick. We call the WKU Innovation Campus that now. It used to be the old mall, the location sitting on the corner of Campbell Lane and Nashville Road, right? We, it was called the Center for Research and Development for a while and now we're sunsetting that brand. So you're going to hear a lot about WKU Innovation Campus. That's the headquarters. The Innovation Campus is not a place. Innovation Campus is sort of a thing. It's a movement. And so that umbrella group, Innovation Campus Headquarters is located there. And that's the picture, kind of an older picture of the facility. But the Innovation Campus umbrella extends to downtown. It'll extend around the region, okay? The idea of a university is to flow things out into the area. We're, we're not trying to be landlords. We're not trying to recruit companies and keep them. We're trying to recruit companies and flow them out into the community. So just want to be clear that that's the way we operate. So Innovation Campus, there's a group called CREATE, the Central Region Ecosystem for Arts, Technology and Entrepreneurship. That's the economic development group at the Innovation Campus. So you'll hear that term. If you look on social media, LinkedIn, you're going to see this thing CREATE. Well, that's us, okay? I'm the Programs Director at CREATE. I'm the CEO of the Innovation Campus too, which is good because we can leverage the facility and we don't have to get into bureaucracies. The other place at the Innovation Campus is called the WKU Research Foundation. And WKU Research Foundation is, is the fiscal core. There's funding in there, the intellectual property. If you invent something at the university, it flows down into that group. And I'm the president of, of the Research Foundation. So CEO of Innovation Campus, President of Research Foundation, and for our purposes, Programs Director for that CREATE group, which is, I think all of the commissioners have been involved in one way or the other, you know, kind of coming to visit us and see things. And so that, you probably already know that. When we talk about economic development, let's be clear, okay? Today, to recruit a company, you need access to talent. Talent is the number one, times 10, most important thing to a company that's starting and growing. The great news about Bowling Green is we are a fantastic place to live. Talented people want to live here. And there's a lot of work going on in the cultural development in downtown to make it even a no-brainer for a place to live. It's very, very nice to have Nashville, as I would call it, an economic sun about 45 minutes from here because we can leverage that today. Companies will come here, they're not afraid to be in Bowling Green because they know there's a massive market down there in Nashville. 20 years ago, when I started, it wasn't that way. 20 years ago, people, company would start in Bowling Green and would end up in Nashville. Today, companies are starting and growing in Bowling Green because we are who we are. And we want to make very careful, as I go through some of these programs, that as Nashville economy grows, that we use that for us so as things don't happen to us. And so that's what we're doing. We're in a concerted way, working with a lot of good folks to make sure that that happens because we love Bowling Green. We, we love who we are, all right? So economic development is about talent. We have about a $45 million facility now in that Innovation Campus, the old mall. When it first started out in 1966, it was, it was one of the largest malls in the country. It was 285,000 square feet. When the new Greenwood Mall was built, this place started to fall apart, okay? It was a theater, maybe a barber shop and some theater, but it was really, really kind of falling down. 20 years ago, the university bought that facility and they hired me. That, my job was to try to figure out how to keep tech companies, start companies and keep tech companies in Bowling Green. And my office is in this little place just inside the door because you couldn't hardly walk inside that mall. And we figured it out. We figured out how to take that facility and use it to be a place where companies wanted to be. And that was version 1.0. Version 2.0, I went to, went out to the private sector for a while and I came back two and a half years ago. And version 2.0 is to figure out how to develop programs that leverages that in order to create those opportunities and jobs. And let's be clear, the companies that we're recruiting into Bowling Green, and I'll tell you about that in a minute, it's not just for tech people like me, an embedded computer systems person. Yeah, there might be an opportunity there. But for every one of those jobs that come, there's two support jobs. So there's opportunities for everyone in this room that's happening and going to be coming about because of that. And as they flow into the community, it makes the community even a better place to live. So it's, we're all, I think, pretty much in sync. There's something I want to brag about in Bowling Green. Did you know that when Stub Fiber located their corporate headquarters inside that facility, they are in the top left corner of that graphic up there? About two weeks ago, they installed extremely high-tech, state-of-the-art equipment. When they turn that switch, just turn that equipment on, Bowling Green will be one of a handful of cities in the entire country that has that level of connectivity. You literally could make the statement that Bowling Green, that building in Bowling Green, when they push that switch, would be one of the most best connected place in the world. Right? It's amazing that we have access. That company is leveraging a lot of investment that's going on. And I can assure you that the companies I'm talking about coming here next, that makes a difference as to whether they locate here. That company can bring 10 gig fiber to your house and will, right? That's as good or better than Chattanooga. And Chattanooga is, you know, heralded as one of the best connected places. Well, we have just as good. And in fact, when they turn the 100 gig switch on, it'll be better because that's what it is. So there's the, the company of Stub Fiber and their location and their, their plan. One of the companies that paid attention to Bowling Green at the appropriate time is a company called MyXR. MyXR has a headquarters in San Francisco, but you know what? It's a mailbox. Their company is growing their headquarters in Bowling Green and they're starting at the Innovation Campus. We met with the CEO and the president on Friday. He was thrilled. And Dana, to answer your question, he said, well, tell me what these companies are going to be saying, are saying. What he said was, and this, and he will come and talk to you and tell you this too. He said, what you have built in Bowling Green with the Innovation Campus, the partnership with the Chamber of Commerce, full partnership with the city, with the county, working very, very closely. He said, what we have built there is unique in the world. They don't have it in Austin. They don't have it in Boston. They don't have it. Bowling Green truly has an asset that's been created at the right time, in the right place, with the right leadership. And I can tell you this, if we didn't have the leadership and the alignment because of you folks, this job would be very hard, you know, recruiting companies. But when they come here, they feel it. They, they literally say, Dana, they say, this is one of the most aligned ecosystems they've ever experienced, right? Envision AESC, the guys who are spending $2 billion putting the battery plant in our backyard, that's what they said. They said directly to me. So those companies, they're feeling the alignment. And MyXR Company, if you guys are curious about what they do, they basically have created a platform that allows gamification to be used to get your attention and keep your attention when we're, they're, you're trying to communicate something. Maybe how wonderful Bowling Green is to live or whatever, you know, the football team, the soccer team. You know, peop, folks nowadays in traditional media have a lot of trouble getting attention and keeping people's attention. It's just very hard. That company has created a technology and it uses artificial intelligence. It does. It uses immersive technologies or AR, augmented reality, VR, those kind of things to get you connected and to, to keep you connected. And gamification is, is one of the ways that's done. So the company's MyXR and you'll hear more about that. So mission of the Innovation Campus, as stated by Dr. Caboni, our founder of the Innovation Campus, is to facilitate the, a more meaningful relationship between WKU and businesses. And that's very, very important. WKU does a fantastic job at creating students, wonderful talent development. And with the Innovation Campus now in play, we're actually doing something in addition to that, which is creating a real value pitch for companies to come here and stay here and look, and, and grow in Bowling Green. I won't go into the long list there on the, the things that are going on, but I can assure you of this. The project that you guys funded is one of the innovation labs and a very, very critical piece of workforce development. The lab, and this is a reminder because you know this, but as a reminder, that workforce innovation lab is, now has a staff member in place. He's funded by, partially by you with a full match from the federal government, from EDA. So the money is coming in and it's being used and doubled, leveraged to have that full-time person. That person uses some of the highest technology that there's available. He's, he's literally using AI engines and HR. ChatGPT, he said, was one of his best friends now because he uses that technology to gather information and also two other AIs. So we're really excited about having that. That person that's working there every day is working there to create non-traditional workforce solutions. The traditional workforce, we do, but we've got some non-traditional things going on. I mean, we've got Envision growing and creating jobs. We've got a lot of things happening and we really need that non-traditional thinking. We need it, it's kind of a think tank in a, in a war room format, okay? That's the way he approaches it. It's very interesting. He's doing a great job. So I mentioned once that we created a database for people, for what's called diaspora, people that have come through here, fell in love with Bowling Green and had to leave for some reason because of opportunities out there. That is where that program lives. It lives in that innovation lab. It's called CoCreate. It's a wonderful place for people that are outside the community that want to get back here to put their personal, their information, their talent resume. It's a confidential database. It stays alive because every six months, we ask the people that are in it, are you still willing to come back to Bowling Green? The answer is either yes, no, or later, okay? And if it's later, then they will, we'll pull them out of the living part of it. If it's yes, then we will use that talent, thousands of people, to recruit whatever tech company we want. Northrop Grumman, when we talked to their staff, they said they were interested in coming to Bowling Green just recently because of that database, because of that investment that you're making. For that to work, we're able to hunt and pick the companies that we, the exact companies at the right time. MyXR CEO told me that was the thing that got his attention. There are 17 companies, 17, in that pipeline now at various stages. Two more tech companies are going to KEDFA and guess where their headquarters will be? Bowling Green, okay? So things are going great. It's a great place to be. Sorry for taking up too much time, but a lot going on. So thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Buddy. Appreciate the, very insightful. It's, it's exciting time to be in Bowling Green. And I know the chamber is very close to announcing a few more announcements that we come in your way and in the AI world and the tech world that, the jobs that I know the commission has sought is a balance of workforce. You know, we, we're interested in building our workforce in not just one sector, but multi-sectors. And that includes the tech world and higher-paying jobs and what keeps and recruits people to stay in Bowling Green. And thank you for helping put that on the map. Appreciate that. All right, so.
Thank you.
Any further discussion on this? Dana?
Yeah, I'll just, Buddy, thank you so much. You came a couple of years ago and said, you know, here's this vision of how we can make this happen. And it's just incredible how much progress we've been able to make in such a short amount of time. And we did, we asked you, you know, to come back and let us know what are the things that the companies need to come here and what is it about Bowling Green that we need to share so that others know this is such a great place to live? And of course, because we know, right? We love Bowling Green and we love it here. And the fact that, you know, folks are discovering it and realizing this is a great place. As a mom, this makes me so excited about my kids. One is a more math and science, the other is more artistic. And it's hard to find the jobs to imagine that they could find right here in Bowling Green and what you're doing there and, and the jobs that you're bringing. When I talk to WKU students, so many of them are here and leave and they're going to other places. And to imagine that with this type of expanding our job opportunities and our businesses that are just going to, like you said, it's not just tech jobs, but all the jobs that come along with it. It's just so exciting for how we're diversifying our economy. And it's just really great to know too that those investments in infrastructure like the fiber optics and like you said, all the, the joint work together through all the entities to bring folks here. And it's just so exciting. I can't thank you enough for being willing to do something that nobody else was doing and pull all these folks together and to see how quickly it really has helped Bowling Green to, to really live into its potential is just really incredible and I'm just so grateful.
I'd like to echo that as well. You know, many of us, we ran on, you know, basically having fiber here back in 2020. So it's, it's amazing that's going to happen. And it's amazing what you said, that there's an opportunity for every single person that's in here. And all five of us want to make sure that we're building a workforce for the future, especially with our city manager, our city workers, you know, the, everybody that's been involved, even with the state, you know, our chamber. And it's amazing what we're going to be doing in the future. I can't wait to look at the opportunities, like you said, the engagement and the opportunities that we're going to have is going to be something amazing. I was talking about Chattanooga back in 2018 because I knew how like it could help out our city. And for what you telling us tonight is that we're going to out, our, our system if, through Stub. And I think it was actually Commissioner Perigin that actually, that introduced them. She did. And for them to come here and for them to turn on and their, by them just turning on already, they're going to be faster than Chattanooga. That's amazing. So I see the opportunities just for every single person. And plus, we lose so much talent like Commissioner Beasley Brown said. And now we get to say, you have a chance to stay here. You can stay here because the talent and the jobs and everything that you're looking for is here in Bowling Green, Kentucky. So Mr. Steen, thank you for just coming before us because I see that, that investment that we're putting in is going to be far outweighed, you know, basically by having our rate of return. We may not see it like tomorrow. We may not see it like tomorrow, but I, we're gonna see it someday for the next couple of years.
I'm, I was talking with John Stub today and he said that there were 30 some odd cities that had the 10 gig. And when they turned their 100 gig switch on, there might be one or two that would be, and Chattanooga might be one of them. But it's, we will be, we won't be underserved in Bowling Green for sure. It's gonna be great. Thank you, sir.
I think their cost is gonna be at or below what most folks are already paying. I talked to Derek last week and he's pretty excited. They're about ready to start dropping lines to homes. It's all good. Thank you.
All right, well, let's, I'm in favor of the small token, so no more discussion, roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-122.
Municipal Order Authorizing and Approving the Submitting of a Loan Application to the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority to Fund the Northside Sewer Force Main Project in the Amount of $8,616,000.
Move. Move back Commissioner Perigin, second back Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
Although BGMU is autonomous, we do approve their board members. We approve their rates and we also approve any issue of debt. So tonight, they are asking our assistance in issuing $8.6 million to build a Northside Sewer Force Main. This is to service the trans park. And what, their main customer is obviously gonna be Warren County Water District. This is 8,500 feet of 24-inch diameter pipes with odor control equipment to go along with it. They've got a really good financing deal with the KIA Fund B, 20 years at 2.25% interest. Looking for our approval on this project. And this would serve to, to, to design and construct the new wastewater force main to serve the trans park industrial and residential growth up in northern, the northern part of Warren County. So Mike Gardner is here with, with BGMU. He's their water sewer wastewater systems manager and can answer any questions you might have on this project. But the city would not pay any of this. It's mostly gonna be paid through Warren County Water District and their revenue generation.
Gardner, thank you for being here. Appreciate our relationship that we have of BGMU providing our utilities, our sewer system, our clean water that we drink and electricity. Runs our air conditioning so right now. So we're thankful with the relationship and presenting this to the public. This is an investment that's necessary. And I know Melinda serves on your board, but Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? All right. Roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2023-123.
Municipal Order Authorizing the Submission of an Application for Kentucky Community Development Block Grant, Coronavirus Community Project Funding to the Kentucky Department for Local Government in an Amount Up to $250,000.
Move.
Second. Move back Commissioner Hill, second back Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
Nick Cook was notified that we had opportunity for this CDBGCV money. We would like to apply for $250,000, would require an $87,000 match and use it to replace our burn building up at Northside, our fire training center. And we estimate the cost, we're not sure about this yet, around $337. It's, it's a modular build from a company called Dragger. It all gets trucked in, they put it together and we replace our live fire training unit or facility up there that's kind of at its, in its, in its life. So be nice to get this grant, if we can get it, and update and replace our, our training, live fire burning facility. It's a two-story structure that they currently train in. Deputy Chief Brett Smith is here, along with Battalion Chief, soon to be Deputy Chief Morris, and can answer any questions you might have on this project or this application, as well as Nick.
Quick question, is this a part of what we were going to rebuild for our new training center? Or is this a separate training facility that we have?
Oh, it's gonna be at the, the Joint Training Center there on Porter Pike. It's gonna replace the existing burn building that we have, that we've done training in for 30 years. As Jeff said, it is beginning to reach the, the end of its usable lifespan. So it will be part of the, the build that's going on up there.
Great, so then that we'll be able to use this to apply towards those funds that we've allocated to build the training center? Or it's separate?
It's a separate part of the, the project. We're kind of envisioning it to a certain extent as the building is down front by Porter Pike, but then out back where our, the fire department's hands-on training, that's sort of, that's sort of part B to us of this build. And so the burn building is an important part of that. We're required to do live burns for our training, get certifications for our firefighters. And the burn building that's there right now has some significant repairs that it needs. And this would, instead of putting more money into that older structure, if we're awarded this grant, it would help us tremendously with our training.
Okay, well, this is exciting. Grateful as always that we're finding those funds to help improve our services.
Hey, any further questions? Roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes, thank you, chief, very much. Municipal Order Number 2023-124.
Municipal Order Authoring, Authorizing and Directing the Mayor to Enter Into Grant Agreements for Flexible Neighborhood Grants with Various Organizations.
Move.
Move by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Carlos Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
This is a program we've had around for 24 years now. It's hard to believe, but this is our flexible neighborhood grant program. We used to call it our SNAP grants, our Select Neighborhood Action Program Grants. We have three to bring to you tonight. First one would be $7,500 to the Northern Heights Parker Bennett Neighborhood to update an entry sign that, that was hit by a car, to replace it and rebuild it, get it back in order. Second is Back to School Bash, $7,500 for their annual event, school supply giveaway down at the Mount Zion Baptist Church, what BGPD helps with as well. And then the last one is the Shake Rag District Recognition, $7,500 there to put in interpretive markers in the signage in the Shake Rag neighborhood, various locations, looking at about 15 sites there. And so Karen Foley is with us, our Neighborhood and Community Services Coordinator, and can answer any, your questions you have on these grants.
Commissioners?
I'm so excited about all these three projects. I know the Northern Heights Parker Bennett Neighborhood, I mean, they've been talking about this sign for a long time and I know they've got to be so excited. And this is exactly, you know, what we hope for these neighborhood grants, right? That this, that the fact that their neighborhood sign is you enter in on your way to Parker Bennett, it's just in crumbled, that we can help bring back that first impression that makes them so proud to live there. So I'm so excited about that project. And of course, the Back to School Bash is just great. That whole neighborhood comes out and it's just an amazing community event. And then the Shake Rag District Recognition is just gonna be so important as we continue to grow down there that we make sure that, that neighborhood is maintaining its identity and that we always make sure that we are recognizing the important history of that neighborhood. And so this is, these are just so great. And so just thank you for your work on helping to strengthen our neighborhoods and, and just continuing to help improve quality of life.
We, I always have to come and I always have to thank the commission and our city management for 24 years now, committing local funds to go to neighborhood-driven projects, to do things in neighborhoods. And I wanted to mention, this is the last batch for the current fiscal year that we are in, which ends June 30th. And when we come in July, the restrictions that we had this year that basically set aside those funds for our tornado-impacted neighborhoods and for our neighborhoods that are in our Bowling Green reinvestment area, those restrictions, those location restrictions will go away. And so as of July 1, we will be entertaining new neighborhood project proposals from across the community. And when we do that, we will be beginning our 25th grant cycle. And I think that's something really cool to celebrate. So I, we are so pleased about these three projects that are taking place in our reinvestment area. We think it's very timely, especially with Shake Rag, that's an important place. And I've been here now long enough that I can remember when our New Era Planning Association worked really hard to, to make sure people knew the story of Shake Rag. They knew where the neighborhood was and is. And some of the early things that they did to bring that name, Shake Rag, and elevate it so that, you know, someone like me who moved from Hardin County and came to WKU and stayed, and I know the story of Shake Rag. The kids coming to WKU can know the story of Shake Rag and all of these neighborhoods that are so important to our history and to our future. So I'm really excited about all of these projects too. Thank you all for committing to do this. It's one of the things I think that makes Bowling Green very forward-thinking and another place for people to come and call home. And I'm very thankful for the neighbors who are helping drive these projects. They want to see these things happen and they want to partner together and collaborate. One other thing I did want to say, you guys know through the Neighborhood Improvement Program, we've been doing some other activities and projects in the Shake Rag neighborhood. And this will, this will be a companion piece. And I think when, whenever we can kind of leverage those things together, we end up with a better product and a, and a better place ultimately, when we're interacting with our neighbors and helping all drive the same direction. So thank you once again.
Also want to echo, I guess, what Commissioner Beasley Brown said. I'm a descendant of someone that actually comes from the Shake Rag area. And when they lost their homes, you know, from Second Street all the way to Third Street and even going to the ball field, there used to be a church that was right there where Hot Rods used to be, where Hot Rods is now. I remember a lot of those stories that my mother told me that some of those people, ironically enough, went to the Northern Heights area and went into the projects. So some of those families, so these proj, these investments, like you said, it's an investment for the future, even investing in for the, the kids. It's not looking at where they are right now, but it's making sure that you build a solid foundation that where they can be tomorrow and what they can be tomorrow and what the talents, we heard earlier, the jobs that are coming, it's gonna be creating a, a whole new batch of talent. And then when it opens up next year, it's for our whole community. It's not just even for one sector, but it's for our whole community. Even if you look at Northern Heights, that, that area was so diverse when, even when I was a kid. We had, you know, African-Americans, white people, you know, our Asian-American communities. At that time, there wasn't too many Hispanic families that were there, but it grew, you know, in the 90s. So it's gonna be something that's gonna be special for Bowling Green, for our entire community. And I can't wait for those investments to come back, because now's the time. We're building a better Bowling Green and it's gonna be something, gonna be something for you, the kids that are here today. It's gonna build for tomorrow. So I appreciate these investments that we have.
Thank you, Karen. No further questions, all right, roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance Number BG 2023-14, our first reading's non-binding.
Ordinance Rezoning Real Estate. Ordinance Rezoning Tracks of Land Containing 22.96 Acres From GB General Business, HB Highway Business, and Ally Light Industrial To PUD Planned Unit Development Located At Zero 1710, 1740, 1798, 1844, 1900, 1902, 1904, 1936, 1940, 1970, 1992, 2010, 2040, and 2140 River Street, presently owned by Diggs on the River LLC.
Move.
Second. Move back Commissioner Perigin, second back Commissioner Carlos Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
Planning Commission met on May 8th. There were six of the eight allotted members present to, to hear this case. It was a six to zero vote in favor of rezoning these, these tracks and rezoning from general business, highway business, light industrial to a planned unit development with the general development plan, which is in your packets. And so Ben Peterson is here to answer any questions you might have about this rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Mizel. I know there may be people here to discuss this tonight and concerned about your, her homes, your neighborhoods. And the way it works, and so I'll just kind of relate as I'm going to entertain, as the mayor, those that have spoken previously at the commission or the planning zoning. And so the planning is what, because the way it works is we're a nonjudicial board. Nonjudicial means that we have to be careful in allowing new evidence that wasn't heard at the planning and zoning. So if there were members here, the public, that want to speak on this specific item on BG 2023-14, they needed to be present and have spoken at the previous meeting. And so if, if that fits the case, I will give you up to five minutes at the podium to be able to speak. And then we also have this open for discussion for the commissioners here. And then we can hear a little bit about, from Mr. Peterson on that.
Yes, my name is Hannah Morse. I live at 1798 River Street, which is within the rezoning zone that was approved. Last we spoke and were there, we mentioned that there were 30-plus families and to my knowledge, more than that now, that live within the zone, that will be forced to move if this gets approved. My concern and the people that are here, main concern, is that 90% of the homes within the trailer park, or no, I'm sorry, 100% of the homes within the trailer park are personally owned. I own, or my fiance owns his home. We pay property taxes on our home. And we understand that the land that it sits on is Eddie Hanks's. We pay him lot rent every month. But the home is ours. We have rights to our home. And the other main concern is he could just come and say, oh, well, just move it. Just move it. It's a quote-unquote mobile home, just move it. But if it's, to my understanding, older than 1996, which 90% of the homes in there are, they are not legally allowed to be moved anymore. They don't have the foundation or the structure that is stable enough to be moved. If they were allowed to be moved, we would have to get approved by another park or by another piece of land in order to move that home. There are, like I said, 30-plus families, young families with children, elderly families with disabilities, families with special needs and autistic children who take on their own set of difficulties when it comes to moving. Excuse me. And it would just, we are also very low-income families. That's the reason we live where we live. It's very low rent. Most of us have paid off our homes, so we're not paying a home loan right now. And so that's how we live. A lot of people are on food stamps, are on childcare, help, WIC, things of that nature. So the reality of just up and moving, whenever he says, move, it's time to move. And moving into a one-bedroom, one-bathroom apartment is $1,000 a month here in Bowling Green at minimum. And that is not big enough for the majority of the families that live there. And then it's not just $1,000 a month. It's moving costs, it's down payment, it's deposit and things like that that just aren't feasible to come up with. feasible to come up with in any sort of short period of time, or whatever timeframe he wants to give us. It's probably just not a reality that a lot of us can see happening. And we are just stuck in what are we supposed to do, who are we supposed to turn to? We don't have a lot of legal aid. I am not a professional by any means. I have no idea what to come up here and say to you guys so that you understand, sorry, what we're going through, and the fear, I mean, the literal fear, that just the people, just the people that own their homes, not to mention the people that rent two blocks or two addresses down from us in the apartments that are supposed to be torn down, and two houses over from us that also rent from him. I haven't included them in my numbers, only the people that I know for sure own rights to their property. And we're just at a loss as to where we're supposed to turn, what we're supposed to do, who we're supposed to talk to, or what money we're supposed to pull out of thin air if we're not able to come to some kind of, I mean, I can't even say agreement, because there has been no communication from them at all. The only notice that we knew that this was even happening, that this, that the rezoning was getting approved, or that they had three approval meetings before the rezoning approval, was that the required commission, the Bowling Green Commission area notice was required to send to our mailboxes. And then, not everybody even got one of those. I took it upon myself, and a couple of these families took it upon theirselves to spread the word without the community, so that we could all be informed. I want to say we have about-
Hannah, you're ending your time.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But just, we're asking that either this doesn't get approved, or that we are pointed in some type of direction as to what our rights are as homeowners, because that's what we are. We are homeowners on this property that are being forced out. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just swinging away. Give me a second. I live on seventeen-ninety-eight River Street, Lot thirty-one. I have two special kids, my youngest is eighteen, and my youngest daughter, she's six. And I have an eight-year-old, she's going to be eight at the end of this month. They ask me all the time, "Mommy, are they going to kick us out?" I just took my little girl just recently. I have to take her to Vanderbilt, because she had a seizure really bad because of this, just because she's autistic, she doesn't realize what's going on. So, my fear is what's going to happen to me and my family. Like I said, I have two kids with special needs. I had to travel to Nashville, to Louisville, because they're doing so much studies on my little girl, and it's really painful, and it's really hard. Just imagine how many families are going to be kicked out to their home just because of what, a selfish reason. Just imagine, just think about the families that they're going to kick out. Just imagine me and myself, me and my husband, my husband is the only one that's working. I had to take care of my three kids, and it's really hard for me to take care of my two older ones, to take care of my two autistic ones. My little one, she has autism spectrum disorder, plus she has seizures, and they had to figure out what's going on with her, why those seizures are happening. And I had to take her again, because they're going to do another operation on her ear, because she's going to be completely dead. So, what do you expect me to do, just to find a house? My little girl, she runs really bad, because she doesn't know, she doesn't realize what's going on. She's on her own mind. So, please, deny this, deny this position. I'm begging you. You see me crying? I've been crying all month long, just to figure out what's going on with my kids. They tell me that with this operation, it's going to be really risky. And so, plus, they're going to kick us, they're going to kick us from our home. My money's like up to here. I'm desperate. I don't know what to do. I think I'm going to kill myself, because I feel, I feel really rejected. Please, help us. Please, I'm begging you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please excuse the baby. My name is Rebecca Voiles. I live at seventeen-ninety-eight, Lot fifty. I've lived there for so long. No, okay. Uh-oh, sorry. The biggest thing is, a lot of you want to make this change, because it would be better for our city. However, for many of the families, we won't be able to live here anymore. I mean, as Star has said earlier, there's nowhere else cheap enough for us to actually live. There's nowhere for our budget to actually fit. We wouldn't, my family, me, my two kids, my mom, we wouldn't be able to make it here, because we don't have the budget to make it here anywhere else. I can't pay a thousand dollars for a two-bedroom. Two-bedroom for five people, that's not very feasible. But we would have to move out of state. I know a lot of people are saying, "Hey..." Sorry. A lot of you are making this decision because you want our town to go in a good direction. But is that direction pushing people out? Because that's essentially where me and my family is. If you allow this, granted, I get money or not, it still won't be feasible for me to actually live in this town anymore. There's no childcare that will take my kids, there's no school that will take my kids. My mom is sixty years old, or she will be soon, but that's neither here nor there. But to actually be able to survive, because that's essentially where every one of us are, we are surviving barely. A lot of people may or may not understand that. That's where we are. We're surviving, and a lot of people won't be able to survive here anymore. We'll have to leave out of state, out of town. And is that the direction that you want Bowling Green to go into? I mean, yes, it is an ambitious, very ambitious, as her lawyer said earlier, but it's not feasible. It's not feasible for people who have less than three thousand income. It's not feasible for kids who can't even go to school, because the school district doesn't want to deal with them. Yeah, I'm not going to send my kid to Bristow just to get a call two hours later. "Hey, come and pick up your son, we can't handle him." Thanks. I'll just do it myself, I guess, like everything else. All right. Then, when I got this little muskin, three years old, wants to just run his screen. No daycare will, no daycare will take her. So, I can't even look for a job to make a budget bigger. My brother has done all that he can. This is where we're at, and we won't be able to stay here. I just wanted you to know, I just wanted you to know that this is the direction that a lot of people are going to be going in. If we can't find somewhere here, we'll have to leave. And I know that this isn't what you want for your town, because that's a lot of workers that won't be working here in Bowling Green, a lot of parents who won't be here in Bowling Green, making Bowling Green better. I just wanted you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca. All right, Mr. Peterson, would you come up, just give us the scope of this project and the timelines that we understand are for the changeover?
Sure. So, the Planning Commission heard the development on May eighteenth, so the city commission would have ninety days from that time to make a final decision for the rezoning. The scope of the project is outlined in the staff report. It's a mixed-use development along the riverfront for the properties that were referenced, all those addresses that were read. The mixed-use nature of it, it would be up to three-hundred-and-seventy-five multifamily units, mixed in with some commercial aspirations. Different things were mentioned, like restaurants, retail, and those types of things. So, very much a mixed-use residential development, included amenities such as walking trails, pavilions, and those types of things. So, more of a resort-type of feel, something a little different than what we've seen in Bowling Green. So, that's what the applicant presented, and that's what's before you tonight.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Peterson.
Is there provisions for the removal or the compensation for these folks? Is there what-
So, all I can speak to is what the zoning ordinance and our section of the state law says, and the short answer is that it's just not addressed. As far as property rights and who owns what, rental landlord-tenant situations, it is not anything that we deal with at the Planning Commission. It would be a legal matter that was mentioned in the Planning Commission hearing. And then, as far as agencies that might be able to help, most of those are nonprofits, and again, not something the Planning Commission necessarily deals with.
I think Brent left, but I was wondering about housing choice vouchers, because what I understand, this is several years out. This is a ways-
Yeah, yeah. As far as timeline goes, I'm not sure, may have misinterpreted the question, but the timeline on the rezoning decision would have been, would be in that ninety-day time period. As far as when the development itself would get built, when anyone would be asked to move, any buildings would be torn down, that would be up to the property owner.
And nobody's here representing the property owner?
Not that, not that I'm aware of.
Has Mr. Hanks made, it's kind of going on with Commissioner Perigin, has he offered to do anything for these property owners?
The only thing that I know is what was stated at the hearing, and that was simply that they made a pledge to try to help, but I don't know that there was really any details of what that meant, or again, timing or anything of that, anything of that nature. So, I can't, again, can't really speak for the property owners.
After listening to these people, I think finances are an issue, and it sounds like their mobile homes are older than what it's going to take to move, so it's going to take legal requirements, legal paperwork, if you will, to get those moved. I would like to see something done to help these people. I don't want them homeless. We have enough homeless as it is. So, as you know, I always support planning and zoning, but this is breaking my heart, and I think we need to do something, even if it's tabling it tonight. We need to go back to Mr. Hanks and say, "What are you going to do for these people?"
I was just going to suggest tabling this for tonight, so that we can hear from-
Yes.
-from the legal folks, and we can hear from Mr. Hanks, and what their intentions are to do. I know Mr. Hanks personally. I don't believe for a minute he's going to allow this to just go on. I feel like he's a really good man that is going to help. I'd also like to hear from Brent Childers, and how many, there's Brent. You're over here, Brent, you can't keep moving on me. It's like changing the groceries in the store. To understand, because what I understand is it's several years out. So, we can get, we have housing choice vouchers around town, we can get people on lists, which does give you a similar amount of rent in certain cases. So, that's what, I really don't want to vote on this tonight until we understand what's in play here to be able to transition folks into something, you know, similar or better.
So, at the risk of, you know, Hillary not being here, but so tonight's just the first reading, so you would still have a second reading, and then Ashley can, maybe, or the city manager can offer whatever advice they wish as well. But I would suggest that Hillary probably advise contacting Mr. Hanks and handling all of that. The Planning Commission's kind of made its recommendation to you all, and they have voted. This issue is kind of outs, a little outside the zoning realm, it's kind of the catalyst to the issue.
And I clearly, I don't think any of us disagree that you're responsible for, or think that you're responsible for relocating people. That's you're responsible for the zoning of it. But I would like to hear from the folks that are responsible for relocating people. And they're not here, and so therefore, I don't know, I'm not comfortable voting on this tonight.
So, I guess my only, I guess, caution on that is, is you have not necessarily set a hearing on the record to call the applicant in to ask him questions. You heard, the testimony, it's fine. So, that's why I would suggest that maybe Hillary advise on that before we get too far down the road. So, you could either have the first reading tonight, and then set a date for the second reading, or I think-
Mr. Mizel.
You go ahead.
Just a question, Ben.
Yes, sir.
If, so we have ninety days from May eighteenth. If there is no decision, does it automatically go into effect, right?
The Planning Commission's recommendation would become-
So, we're looking at an August eighteenth kind of deadline to, yeah, we have, next meeting will be canceled, but we still have plenty of meetings before then to figure this thing out.
I really would appreciate tabling this decision tonight.
I second that motion.
I don't want to, I don't want to voice my opinion.
We need a motion on the floor. We have a motion on the floor right now, so we'd have to have a motion to table it, and if there's, Commissioner wants to present that.
Yeah, and then I'll second it.
All right, so Commissioner Perigin is motion to table this.
We can hear from the folks that are initiating all of this. I want to hear what their plans are. And I want to say to these folks, "Thank you for coming up," and I know it's not easy to, I know that, okay? We get it.
Ben, I didn't get to ask this, but, and this may have been already asked, because I was looking at the timeframe, and I know you said it could be several years, but is there a way, and it may be a question for Hillary, that they can grandfather, because these, these homes were built, you know, in nineteen-ninety-six or before nineteen-ninety-six, that could be grandfathered and be put on other properties?
I have no idea. That's a legal question for attorneys, and not in the Planning Commission realm, it would be in the realm of a landowner versus a tenant situation.
So, we have a motion to table Sue, and I think Dana, you said you seconded it. All right.
I just want to hear what their plan is before we move forward.
I agree.
Mayor, real quick, Sue.
I don't know. I don't, I think unless it's, has been covered in the planning, in the planning and zoning meeting-
That's correct. It has to be in the minutes from the-
Right.
I just, I guess, if, am I allowed to ask a question about what he just said about obviously?
I don't think so.
Is, this isn't a, it's not a realm-
When we have the hearing, you're welcome to come and ask questions.
Sue, real quick, did you want to hear from Brent Childers with regard to your question?
No, I think we could do that as part of the hearing, when we do, when we-
Well, I will, I mean, because I think I would like to share kind of what I would like to know in terms of like community resources. It's not planning and zoning for me. Before we come back, if there's a way for us to find out in terms of voucher options and then legal aid, to be able to come in and help folks figure out on that end, if, yes. No, I would like to know right now, you can tell us at this point what you can.
I mean, it's fun.
Well, this is discussion on this one particular, well, hang on.
We'll make sure our order was correct.
and then legal aid, to be able to come in and help folks figure out on that end. If, yes. No, I would like to know right now. You can tell us at this point what you can.
I mean, it's fun. We'll call the roll in a moment.
Well, this is discussion on this one particular, well, hang on.
We'll make sure our order was correct.
All right, so we're tabling it, but we haven't voted on that.
Correct.
We're just discussing. Okay.
Okay, so the voucher system is administered by Neighborhood and Community Services at 707 East Main. And just for everybody in the audience, is at the building on top of the hill, right below the red, white and blue water tower that we can all see from town. If you park in the lower parking lot, you come in the door, you go through those doors in the back, right in there in the glass wall. It will say Section Eight Housing Division. You go in there, we accept housing applications every single day from eight to four o'clock. Those vouchers, we have an open waiting list, and so that first application is a one-page. If you can prove that you live inside the city limits of Bowling Green through some type of statement, then that allows you to move up the waiting list to speed that up, but there is still a waiting list. Like any other resource, there is never enough resource to meet the needs, so there's still a waiting list. But that program exists and is available for anyone right now. And then, as you get called off that waiting list, is when they go through the verification. This first step is just putting your name on list. It's contact information, name, that sort of thing. The income verifications and all those other parts come at a later date. So, anyone interested in receiving housing assistance through a voucher program where we do help, because we understand that the lady talked about thousand-dollar rents, you know, eight hundred to a thousand. We understand that a lot of families can't afford that. That's why HUD provides us those funding dollars to assist those families as part of that. And so, anyone that is interested, eight to four, Monday through Friday, 707 East Main, park in the lower-level parking lot, walk in the door, you'll see it right there. Ask for a pre-application, and the ladies at the front glass will help you make sure that you get that filled out, corrected, and entered into the database so that you're on the waiting list.
I hope you get thirty families tomorrow. That would be my advice right out of the gate.
That's why I wanted to restate that.
I hope that you get thirty families tomorrow, because the waiting list is, and we have seven hundred, eight hundred vouchers across town.
That's why the preference is important to move you up the waiting list.
And then, for the housing authority, they'd want to apply there separately.
You would have to apply there separately, and that's at their office on Double Springs. Similar type of program, but you would have to apply through their office on Double Springs. Go in, say, I would like to apply for housing assistance, and that is at their units. So, that's the difference in the voucher program. The voucher is out in the community, helping people find, pay rent in the community. The housing authority is at the units that they own at their properties, but you would have to apply at their office on Double Springs Road.
Hope there's thirty families that apply there tomorrow as well.
That is another resource in this community.
Another resource would be the South Central Kentucky Workforce Development Board. There is money for job training if you want to, you know, change jobs, get another job that pays more. We've got three to four thousand openings here in Warren County. So, that office would be more than helpful. They're just across, just a couple of blocks over on Cheston Street that can help, help with that side of things, too. So, we got, there's a lot of opportunity. We get federal money, workforce, innovation. We owe, what's it stand for, Brent?
Workforce Opportunity Innovation Act.
Thank you. That's federal money. I think it's up to three or four thousand dollars per person for job training. You do pretty much whatever you want to do, get a different, fresh start. So, that's another angle I might want to look into as well, as an opportunity.
Help.
Okay, so, motion on the floor is to table this. Can we have a roll call, please?
Can we make, can we still have discussion on it? I hadn't been able to make a statement.
Okay, you had some new requests?
Well, I thought we had to discuss it before we vote, right? If I wanted to discuss why I'm wanting to put it on the table.
Well, we're going to have all this discussion in what we're tabling, so we're going to move it to a different time to discuss it. I mean, it's not over.
Right, so if I need to say something to the families here, I need to say it now.
Sure.
Right? Yeah, okay. I just wanted to thank you all so much for coming and letting us know about what's going on there. You know, we talked so much about Bowling Green today, and who we are, and why this is such a great place to live. And part of it is each other, right? And how we take care of each other. And so, I hope you see here today that we do care, and that we are a community of people who want to see each other thrive. And we want to make sure that, as a city, we're going to try to make sure that happens between now and August 18th. So, I, if at all possible, if there is a staff person who could, or if we, I don't know if y'all, you know, can stay. I don't know how much, we have a lot of things left to do, but I want to make sure if there's a way for us to continue to communicate with you all, make sure we can get the right folks meeting with you all, if we can maybe get some contact information before you all leave, so we can make sure that happens. I also grew up in a trailer. I'm very well aware of the rights of people who live in trailers are worse than renters. You have no rights, and it makes incredibly difficult to continue to build equity and build a good life for yourself when you never know, and when it could literally get ripped out from under you. The fact that someone could sell the land out from under your home should not be legal in this country. And I'm so sorry that you all are going through this, and if we can make it right, I know we're all going to try to do that. So, just wanted to thank you all so much for sharing with us and, yeah, make sure we get your kind of information so we can continue to help.
I want to echo a little bit of everything that Commissioner Beasley Brown said, but I think what you saw today, that all five of us here care. You know, I mentioned earlier that my, I'm a descendant from the Shakirac community, so I understand what it's like to lose certain things, but also implore, implore you guys, please take advantage of some of the things that we have within the city, too, because we want to make sure that you guys are well taken care of, even if that's jobs, the workforce that Mr. Mizel had talked about, the vouchers that Mr. Childers had talked about. We're tabling it, and I think all five of us really do care and want to make sure everything is, is going to be in your favor, but also try to find a win-win. I'm an attorney by trade, and I'm a poor, I came from poverty. I came from a single-parent household where we had to move from place to place to place. And one thing that I learned is that there's contractual laws and things that are going on, and you have to look at it. But we want to make sure that at some point, there's a win-win, and make sure that you guys, because we don't, we don't want to create more homeless. I think that Commissioner Perigin, or it may have been Commissioner Hill that talked about that. We don't want to do that. But please, I'm imploring you guys, as Mr. Childers has given out things, go there tomorrow. If there's, you know, the workforce and there's better jobs and the training, please go seek that. I come from a house where when, in wintertime, my mother had to have the stove on just to have heat. And I'll never forget that, and I come from a single-parent household, so I understand what it means to be poor. But let me also tell you guys, where you start out doesn't have to be where you end up. So, please take advantage of those programs that we have.
Thank you, Carlos. The reason we have those programs is to allow people to increase the chances of doing a lot better. I think, you know, I'm not going to tell my story, because it's, you don't want to hear it, but, because you have your stories. But the thing is, is that's why we have these programs. These are hand-ups. They're hand-ups. Because I don't remember who said, but yes, we want a better community. We want, I'm for development on River Street. I'm not going to make and be ashamed of that, but I'm also for getting you all to a place of security, housing security, job security. You know, unfortunately, we have a lot of these resources, not the housing resources, the vouchers are well-used, and so is the housing authority. But these job programs, they go, they're kind of ghosted a lot of times. There are programs out there that folks just don't, they don't use. They don't see themselves in a, in a different place, especially when it comes to employment. It's called the South Central Kentucky Workforce Board. I'd be all over that. And it's free job training, free. You want to be a hairdresser, you want to be a welder, you want to be a carpenter, you want to be whatever it is. It's, the sky's the limit. But please, I'm going to agree with Carlos, implore you all to take advantage of these programs that you're learning about tonight. Maybe you didn't know about them before, that can absolutely give you a way forward.
I, Commissioner, I, Mayor, I'd even be willing to be the link if they want to put their names and phone numbers, their information on a list in the back of the room, and we be that connection link to South Central Kentucky Workforce Development Board. I'll call them tomorrow, and we'll get something set up if there, if anybody's interested in doing that. And we just need your information so that we can transfer that over, and they can be in touch with you and help, help.
Can we pass around a clipboard to this group and anybody that's interested in?
Karen, can you help us out with that? Before you leave, if you're interested in that, we'll be that connection for you and take care of that if you're interested.
I want to thank everyone for being here tonight as well, but I also, you see, all five of us are in agreement to want to help. But I also don't want you to leave tonight with a false sense of hope. When it boils down to it, we, as a commissioner, are going to have to follow the law. But we've all agreed, we want to look at every opportunity we can possibly do for you. But please, go do your part as well. Please, just, I don't want you to go and think this is going to be great. It's going to work out in our favor, and then by August, it doesn't go the way. I'm not saying how it's going to go. But please, don't leave with a false sense of hope. We are going to work, though, do our best to see, try to make us all happy.
All right, thank you all. Thank you, commissioners. Thank you, citizens. This is up for table, and this is the vote. So, roll call, Mrs. Jackson.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. All right, thank you all for being here for that. Ordinance number BG twenty-twenty-three dash fifteen, so our first reading is non-binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing forty-two point nine-two acres from PUD Planed Unit Development to GB General Business RM Three Townhouse Multifamily Residential and RS One D Single Family Residential located at zero and forty-nine seventeen Rustville Road, presently owned by West Haven Properties LLC.
Oh, moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
Planning Commission met on May 18th on this one as well. Of the six, of the eight allowed to vote on this, there were six present, and it was unanimous, six yeas to recommend this rezoning. It's forty-three acres on Rustville Road from Planed Unit Development and General Business, or to General Business, and RM Three Townhouse Multifamily Residential, as well as Single Family Residential with a general development plan. This property is owned by West Haven Properties LLC. The principal there is Wayne Vincent. In your packets, you'll see the map of this forty-three acres and what they have planned. And Mr. Peterson is here to answer any questions you might have on this rezoning.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mizel. Thanks for being here. Mr. Peterson, commissioners, at this time, do you have any questions?
I believe this is the old tee-to-green driving range property, Ben.
Okay, no questions at this time. Roll call, please.
Bailey. Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number Twenty-twenty-three dash one-twenty-five.
In a spoiler, authorizing the purchase of personal protective equipment, supplies, and services through non-competitive negotiations with Air Gas USA LLC of Dallas, Texas, and Cintas First Aid and Safety of Cincinnati, Ohio, in the total amount of eighty-one thousand, three hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-four cents.
Oh, moved. Second.
Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
Dave Weisbrodt is here with us still, and I'd like to ask him to come up and explain what we're doing here with our PPE, as well as our first aid supplies. Dave?
This past, this past winter, we issued a request for proposal to supply all city departments with general protective, personal protective equipment and first aid products. The idea was to combine all departments' personal protective equipment needs into one package to obtain the best pricing possible. From that RFP, we did not receive any responsive bids. So, we went into non-competitive negotiations with Cintas, who we were very familiar with, because they already service a lot of our city facilities for first aid products, and Air Gas, who we have obtained a lot of our PPE through because of the good pricing we've had in the past. Following negotiations, I'm confident that combining all of the department's PPE and first aid needs have produced favorable pricing for both, and thus, I'm recommending approval of this purchase.
Thank you, Mr. Weisbrodt. Commissioners, questions? None? All right, roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number Twenty-twenty-three dash one-twenty-six.
In a spoiler, authorizing the continuation of a contract with JNF Janitorial Services, Inc. of Somerset, Kentucky, for professional cleaning services in the amount of two hundred ten thousand, eight hundred and twenty dollars.
Oh, moved.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
In April twenty twenty, we went out for bid for cleaning services, and we selected JNF Janitorial. In that bid, that contract, we had an option to renew up to four, four more years. We are recommending that renewal. I think this would be the third of the four years. JNF has a letter in your packets that they have agreed to keep the current rate as is, and would like to recommend renewal of the contract for two-ten, eight-twenty for this upcoming fiscal year. Andy Souza, Public Works Director, is here, can answer any questions about this, facilities, management is under, as you know, Public Works.
Okay, commissioners, do you have any questions? None? Roll call, please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal Order Number Twenty-twenty-three dash one-twenty-seven.
In a spoiler, approving a contract through cooperative purchase with Atlantic Emergency Solutions, Inc. of Manassas, Virginia, the cooperative purchasing contract with Houston-Galveston Area Council for the purchase of a fire apparatus in an amount not to exceed seven hundred, eighty-one thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars.
Oh, moved.
By Commissioner Beasley Brown, and by Commissioner Perigin, second. Mr. Mizel.
So, I'm going to try to explain this one, and then hopefully Deputy Chief Brett Smith will help me out here. But we currently have three fire trucks on order, and we keep getting pushback on delivery of those. And so, currently, we are using some trucks that are, should be in reserve, that we're using frontline. One of those is an engine at Station Seven out on Lover's Lane. It's a two thousand and ten engine that has some things that needs to be fixed, but we can't afford to take it out of service. We wouldn't have a truck at Station Seven. The rest of the reserve is two thousand and five, two thousand and seven, two thousand and nine, and a two thousand and seven aerial. To top it all off, not blaming anybody, but we lost one of our heavy equipment fleet technicians just two weeks ago. So, we were down to one heavy equipment technician at Fleet, and trying to keep ten trucks up and running. And so, Chief Brooks came to us, and they have found an opportunity to buy a truck straight off the lot. They call it a stock engine. It's pretty much everything we need in the way of an engine. Seven hundred fifty gallons, capacity of water and some foam. And we have, we could get it for a couple hundred thousand dollars less than what we spec out for customized engines. And so, we're coming to you tonight. We have an opportunity to buy it from the Houston-Galveston Cooperative, or Area Council Cooperative Purchasing Agreement that we signed on to a couple of years ago. And this would, this would at least get us a truck that we could place at Station Seven. We pull that two thousand and ten that needs some attention back off. When we get one of the other trucks that come in, we can, we can pull this one from Station Seven, put it at Station Eight, the transpark next April when it's finished, and we shuffle them around. But this would really help kind of boost our reserves a little bit better. And I'm going to turn it over to Brett before I screw something up. So, but it's seven eighty-one, one twelve would be purchase price. We have the money in fund, fund balance reserve and Fire Improvement Fund with some underspending and other things we're going to defer. And we think we could scrape together the money without borrowing and get us in better shape. especially with having one mechanic left at Fleet. We're, we're having to outsource more stuff to Shepherdsville. So turn it over to Deputy Chief Smith.
Thank you. The basis of this issue started with, we can say, supply chain issues, but the time that it's taking for manufacturers to produce fire apparatus is growing. It used to be we would expect twelve to eighteen months, that's gone to twenty-four months. We've gone to thirty months that we're waiting for a fire engine to be built. Station Eight, that's under construction, currently is twelve to fourteen month build time. We can build a station in half the time that they can build a truck. So that's part of the issue that's pushing this timeframe back, putting pressure on our fleet issues. So we do need this truck to be able to run as a frontline apparatus at Station Seven. Then when that unit comes in, we will be able to move this to Station Eight for just a little while. Engine Eight, I believe, is expected to arrive in April of twenty twenty-five. The latest I heard was now May of twenty twenty-five. So those, those supply chain issues are causing fire apparatus to just back up further and further. This opportunity came to us, the Fire Improvement Fund was healthy enough to be able to, to help address this issue. So it will be a great benefit to the fire department.
Go ahead, Gina.
Did you say what year this fire apparatus was?
The fire apparatus is under construction right now.
Oh, got it, oh, perfect.
As a stock truck, it's already moving down the line and we should receive it in November of this year. So that's, that's the, the benefit of the stock truck.
I think what's happened is with all the ARPA money, there was a slew of orders of custom trucks to go in. Those tend to be manufactured after the ones they want to get out on the lots to sell. So that's the predicament we're in.
Brett, I heard that this truck had a capacity of carrying its own water and foam load, is that normal for our trucks? It is, yes sir, most of our fire apparatus carry a five hundred gallon water tank. This one has seven hundred and fifty, so a little bit more on this fire truck, which is great for our first-in fire attack. Any truck that you see rolling around the city of Bowling Green has five hundred gallons on it. So that increases, increases the speed and efficiency of our operations. We're able to get a crew on the scene and start flowing water and attack a fire very rapidly before somebody connects to a hydrant, brings in the water supply.
I've got a question, I, I understand, you know, the, the desire to have custom-made fire trucks, I think that's great. But I also think that saving a couple hundred thousand dollars and getting them in a much more timely manner is also great. So maybe we should look at ordering a few more stock trucks and customizing them our, our own way, I mean, along the way. And I, I don't know if that's feasible or if that's just, you know, until this, this problem goes away.
Sure. The analogy that I use is it's a lot like buying a spec home, right? You can, you can, you can pick your colors and your cabinets and your countertops, but the floor plan is basically laid out. The custom trucks that we usually order, they have more storage space. We have storage boxes on top of the trucks where we keep water rescue gear, so on and so forth. This truck will have some storage up top, but not near as much as what we usually, what we usually have. In addition, the pre-connect hose lays that we spec out on our custom trucks are a little bit quicker to deploy. We believe that speed seconds saves lives. So this truck has the same pre-connect hoses, but they're a little bit higher up on the truck, a little bit more difficult to get to. Those are just a couple of the options that we usually spec out on a custom truck. But your point is well taken, yes, absolutely.
Understand that, I get it, but.
Yes ma'am.
Just to get something for our new fire station.
Absolutely, absolutely. And that's why, that's why we're looking at this stock truck and hoping for approval.
I'd have one last question, is this, this, what we're using here is cooperative, the cooperative that we joined a couple of years ago? Whose idea was that for us to join the cooperative?
That idea came from former Chief Jason Coulson. He brought that opportunity to us and as we looked into it, we saw the value in it and moved forward with entering into that agreement.
Well, I just want to give a shout out to former Chief Jason Coulson for leaving that legacy, to think about, you know, you don't know, you know, how much something's going to matter in the future. And I'm just, just grateful that he's leaving a legacy, that it continues to help us solve problems and we get into a jam like not being able to get a fire engine until May of twenty twenty-five. So just grateful for all of you all, just being such amazing and forward thinkers and taking such good care of us.
So with the price as well.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Chief. Questions for Commissioners, roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-eight.
In a spoiler, approving amendments to the City of Bowling Green Manual of Purchasing Policies and Procedures.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey, Mr. Mizel.
It was a House bill in this last General Assembly that raised the requirement, the threshold for bids on projects from thirty thousand to forty thousand. We, we looked at that and saw that we needed to update our purchasing policy and procedures manual. And so before you tonight, is that change, you'll see a lot of strike-throughs from thirty to forty thousand. I did not request any change in my authority to approve. Anything above fifty thousand will still come to you all in this room. We are changing though, adjusting purchase PO exemption limit from two hundred to five hundred and then adjusting the bidding threshold and quotation process to reflect the same domino effect up. And so Megan will now have authority to look at and, and, and approve, along with Katie, purchases up to forty thousand and then from forty to fifty thousand will be my kind of range that I'll look at and approve. And anything above fifty, as I mentioned, will, will still be the same. So Katie can answer any questions about this. I think in this House bill, we also got some things, more flexibility with nonprofits built into there so where we can work more with nonprofits to provide services without having to bid those out, such as mowing. And so that's really going to give us some flexibility there as well. So it was, it was a pretty good bill.
Mr. Mizel. Commissioners. Roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-nine.
In a spoiler, authorizing an amendment to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky Capital Improvement Program for fiscal years twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three through twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
This is a second amendment to our capital improvement program. We started doing this, this fiscal year, I really like this idea that Katie came up with, with keeping this document up to date with changes in budget or new items that we add, like this fire truck. So I put that on the CIP schedule. Katie wrote a, actually Megan and Katie wrote a good memo in your packets. It give you, gives you the highlights of the changes incorporated in the second amendment. And Katie's here can answer any of your questions on this, this item.
Mizel. Commissioners.
Thank you, Katie, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, no further questions, come, roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-three dash one thirty.
In a spoiler, approving appropriations for specified eligible agencies for fiscal year twenty twenty-four.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
So with the FY twenty-four budget, there were, were some appropriations to our contracted agencies. This is to make it official. These are the actual agreements and the amounts that align with our FY twenty-four budget. And Katie can answer any questions you might have on these that are in your packets. There is a schedule that was the same that we provided to you with the budget in your packet. Recommend approval of this municipal order.
Again, appreciate many of the organizations for being here. We're getting a great bargain and a big bang for our buck for what you're accomplishing for our community. We're grateful for our community partners. I'm just going to list them here, if you don't mind, I'm going to say the Bowling Green Economic Development Authority, the Bowling Green Human Rights Commission, the Bowling Green Warren County Drug Task Force, the Bowling Green Warren County Humane Society, the Bowling Green Warren County Regional Airport, Bowling Green Warren County Welfare Center, this, and the Hobson House Commission, the City-County Planning Commission and the Bowling Green Warren County Operation Pride, Inc. And the United Way of Southern Kentucky and our two-one-one center. Did I miss that at all? Thank you, Katie, appreciate you all and grateful for you all.
I want to say a personal thanks for those that came tonight and I see the Drug Task Force, I see the Human Rights Commission. Are you all from any agencies, anybody else from any other?
Airports here.
Airport. Yeah. And, and, I mean, it's, it's great that, that you came and, and we really appreciate your service. I, I especially appreciate the board that I'm on, which is the Drug Task Force, which is really amazing work that they do to keep, keep things at bay in our, in our great community. And I don't know how you do it, but, but, you know, you do. And, and so thank you and, and also to the airport and great party the other night at the hangar party, it was, it was nice. And.
City Planning's here too.
Oh, City Planning Commission, oh.
He has not left.
I had noticed.
I had a quick question, I noticed that all this funding was pretty much flat. And so I was checking to make sure if y'all got at least cost of living raises because you have other funding or how does that, I just feel, yeah.
Some agencies did not request any change from the prior year. Some agencies did request an increase, we limited that increase to no more than six point five percent with the exception of the Planning Commission and Drug Task Force, which we are required to match fifty-fifty with the county. And the county has already approved their budget as well, so that's why those are a little bit higher. But yes, the majority of the agencies that requested an increase, they all received an increase. It might not have been exactly what they wanted, but it was at least six point five percent higher than the prior year.
Thank you all so much for everything you're doing. We know you all are fulfilling such important services in our community and, I mean, just over the past year, thinking about, you know, fentanyl coming into our community and how just already it's been so destructive and what a key role you all play in keeping our community safe. And thinking about the Humane Society and, you know, through the tornado, thinking about how important it was when they were a place that people who lost their homes could have a safe place to put their animal. And we could just go on and on about the ways that you all strengthen our community and, and make this an important, fulfilling functions that we as a city are not providing, but are essential services. So thank you all so much for being here and for everything everyone does.
Okay, thank you. Roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG twenty twenty-three dash sixteen, so our first reading is non-binding.
Ordinance relating to budget amendment, ordinance approving amendment number three to the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual operating budget for fiscal year twenty twenty-three.
So moved, second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
So as you all know, we have to amend budget from time to time. Is this number three, number four? We, we may.
Sorry.
The heading wrong, but it is number four and the final one. This has a lot of stuff in it, just briefly, it's got the one point five million CDB GCV grant that we got. It's got the one point six million SNAP grant that we got for College Street Bridge, some new donations, use, use of contingency for College Street cost, the bridge, a little overrun there. We're transferring some money out for capital project funds, some to aquatics, some to Fleet, to the Equipment Replacement Fund. We're also funding with cash reserve, no borrowing, the transpark station and the Northside Fire Station with unreserved fund balance. So we will not have to borrow any money on the training center or the two new fire, the Northside Rehab, redo, whatever you want to call it, and the new transpark fire station. So that's all included in this budget amendment before you tonight. Katie can answer any detailed questions or add to my comments.
I, I just wanted to say with the, this six point seven five million dollars, we're going to save almost two point eight million up to three point five million, not having to pay interest on that. So we were very fortunate to be able to come up with that additional funding at the end of this year's budget. And so we are going to essentially, general fund is going to make a loan to FIF, the Fire Improvement Fund and it will pay back over a period of time. We did this with the Lover's Lane Station as well and it, it has worked out well for us and we're certainly saving, we believe, a significant amount of money based on what interest rates could be if we were to finance.
One point five million dollar grant helped to with.
Yes.
With the fire station.
And the ten million dollar ARPA money that you.
Yes.
Put toward the training center.
Thank you. I, I'm so proud of the fact that the city for a long time now has worked really hard to make sure we're pre-funding projects so that we don't have to borrow money. And I know this one was really hard to imagine that we could do this without borrowing money and I'm just so grateful for the work that, you know, all of you do, but especially you Katie, to, you know, keep what we do so efficient and being good stewards of our funds so that we have these opportunities at the end of the year to make these investments and save taxpayer dollars. So just thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioners, thank you, Katie. Roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-one.
In a spoiler, approving the appointment of Jose Gonzalez to the Bowling Green Code Enforcement Nuisance Board.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. I am recommending to place Jose Gonzalez on our Bowling Green Code Enforcement, talk to him in nuisance. This is not an easy job, it's, but a talk, he, a little bit about Jose, he is a entrepreneur. He's general manager for Mercantado Hispano. He's replacing Randy Dear, he's also replacing, graduate from Greenwood High School and he's excited to join this board and recommend him for this appointment. Okay, thank you all. Roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-two.
In a spoiler, approving the reappointments of Greg Gay and Darmy Shaw to the City-County Planning Commission of Warren County.
So moved, second.
The next two are both reappointments, this is Greg Gay that, and Darmy Shaw. Darmy Shaw was an appointment that I made, recommended Greg Gay as a previous appointment that would like to continue. He's been serving well and I'm both proud of Darmy and Greg Gay and recommend them for reappointment. Thank you, roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number twenty twenty-three dash one thirty-three.
In a spoiler, approving the appointment of Alex Notmeyer to the Bowling Green Municipal Utilities Board.
So moved, second.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Dana Beasley Brown. I am very excited to state that Alex Notmeyer has, he is accepted and he was a previous board member for BGMU. He is in real estate, a little bit about him, he's been a member of Chamber of Commerce. He's replacing Todd Davis, which served admirably, but it's time for him to step down. He's been on the PVA Board of Appeals, he also did the Downtown Redevelopment Board Member and he has agreed that he would be willing to come back and serve another stint on the BGMU Board. Okay, thank you, roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG twenty twenty-three dash ten is our second reading's binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning tracts of land containing five point nine three acres from LI Light Industrial to PUD plant unit development, located at one-ten, one-fifty and one-eighty Center Street, zero, one-twelve, one-thirty-four and one-forty College Street, zero East Second Avenue and three-oh-one East River View Drive, presently owned by Beach Holdings LLC.
So moved, second.
By Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. This was a five and O vote at our last board meeting, unless there's any new recommendations or questions. None at this time, roll call please.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Perigin.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG twenty twenty-three dash eleven, second reading's binding.
Ordinance rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning attractive land containing six point three eight acres. Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning attractive land containing six-point-three-eight acres from AG Agriculture and RM4 multifamily residential to PUD Planned Unit Development located at nineteen-sixty-five Kentucky Highway one-eighty-five, presently owned by Beach Holdings LLC.
So moved. Second.
Goodbye Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigent. This was a five-and-o. Is there, at the last board meeting, is there any new discussion? None, roll call please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ordinance number BG twenty-three, excuse me, BG twenty-two-three dash twelve, second reading is binding.
Ordinance adopting annual city budget. Ordinance adopting the City of Bowling Green, Kentucky annual operating budget for fiscal year beginning July one, twenty-twenty-three and ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-four by estimating revenues and appropriating funds for the operation of city government.
So moved. Second.
Move back Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. This is a five-and-o for a budget. Is there any new discussion? None, roll call please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ordinance number BG twenty-two-three dash thirteen, second reading is binding.
Ordinance relating to classification pay schedules. Ordinance admitting the classification pay schedules. G for generally classified, D for department head management, and U for unclassified part-time employees and authorizing pay increases for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four.
Moved. Second.
Goodbye Commissioner Hill, second, oh, goodbye Commissioner Perigent, second by Commissioner Hill. Five-and-o vote at our last board meeting. Any new discussion? None, roll call please.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Perigent?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Ms. Jackson, while you're checking for public comments, our next meeting will be on July eighteenth at twenty-twenty-three. We will not have one on the July fourth for the holiday week. And then we will be meeting July eighteenth. Okay. All right. Do I have Bobby Davenport here? I don't know, because it is, and then Brian Fishback. All right, Mr. Fishback, welcome. I'm going to give you five minutes. That's what we have for public.
Ms. Brian Fishback, I just got to, I wrote something here real quick. It won't take very long. I'm here to announce that there's a meeting that is scheduled for the Bowling Green Warren County residents to be held on July eleventh at the relocated Roland Blaine Park at the address of four-hundred Center Street in Bowling Green, Kentucky at six-thirty PM. That is a meeting that will be about the inclusion of residential neighborhood areas in the Bowling Green Warren County, being a part of the neighborhood, neighborhood stabilization programs that includes the Magnolia Street area or similar, similar to that plan that they've been including in the past year or so, and the Eastwood Church area. For example, to have the inclusion of the Shakret Community and the Double Springs Road area neighborhoods that includes what has been the Sugar Maple Square Shopping Center and the Ombe Way where seemingly illegal apartments are getting built. And also the Kentucky Transpark where the Tyson Foods Factory Plant and the Envision Factory are being planned to be built. Also, the new River, River Landings area where seemingly not the proper road traffic studies have been conducted. And to become similar to the group, included in the group with this Magnolia Way that's been involved the last few years, the Magnolia, Magnolia Way area has been involved in the last few years. And also the Glen Lilly Road Residential Area whose residents voiced their opposing opinion toward the Warren County Fiscal Court's plan in order to halt the Warren County Fiscal Court's plan to have a dirt racetrack built, to get built near the Glen Lilly, again, let me say this correctly, Glen Lilly Road Residential Area a few years ago that will have disturbed their Glen Lilly Road Residential Neighborhood area. And not long after this meeting with the Warren County Fiscal Court, the Warren County Fiscal Court voted to not build this planned dirt racetrack in or near the Glen, the Glen Lilly Road area. For this meeting, all Warren County BG residents are invited to attend this meeting, including the representatives of the BG City Commission Board and the Warren County Fiscal Court and the Warren County Planning and Zoning Board and the BG Neighborhood Community Service Department. Thank you. When was that meeting, Mr. Fishback? I just. July eleventh. And what's the location? All right, thank you. All right, thank you ladies and gentlemen. This concludes our meeting. We adjourn.